Central Board of Education regular meeting Monday, March the ninth, twenty twenty at seven o'clock P M. Meeting to order. Members present are David, Brett, Kenny, Jennifer, and Suzie. This time we move on to recognition of different middle school teachers.
Continuing this year with our recognition of different whether it's students or faculty members. Tonight we're going to ask the Supreme reading to come up and present on some things going on at the middle school. I know she has a kite that her students have made, but I've talked in here before about what the middle school has been doing with their fifth grade Fridays, and then their sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, eighth period. So she's going to talk a little bit about how some progress that they've made and some things they've been doing as part of that. So thank you. Let you share this, please. Appreciate it.
Oh, wow. Thank you. Um, we've been, uh, the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade have been doing the program for the last six weeks. We're finishing up this sixth week. Fifth grade set a great standard and we're just trying to make that work for us. And so the kids were identified in four different groups. Those who were disciplined, had discipline issues, those who are low academically, and then those who just maybe have been gone and need to make up a few things. And then the enrichment group, and I was blessed to be in the enrich- in enrichment group. So everybody wanted to be in my group. And this is what we did. We made kites. And so, um, I had seventh graders two weeks, eighth graders two weeks, and sixth graders two weeks. The main thing I've seen, the main positive thing I've seen come out of this is that kids who weren't motivated to do their work are motivated now because they want to get out of the low red group, or they want to get out of the yellow, or they want to come, they want to get out of yellow so they can come to me and make the kites. And so that's what I've seen is just what do I need to do? How do I get out of this? How do I get out of this level into that level? And so more than just, we only had fourteen minutes this year and we're going to work on that next year. But, um, more than just there's not very much time was their, their motivation just went through the roof as far as getting things done because they were kind of laid back and didn't really care. They're kind of too cool to care about their grades when they're at junior high. But, um, that was, that was the main positive thing I found out about us.
Absolutely. The thing I say, I mean, is all of those kids getting what they need academically in a short amount of time. You know, or maybe before it was you put it in the grade book and move on. Now we have a chance to recapture those things that those students did learn.
They do, and they're coming.
And at the same time, take those enrichment kids and take it a little bit deeper. Yep.
And we really tried to play it up so that when we went outside to fly our kites, we'd have had a lot of noise going down the hall. So people in yellow and red could say, well, what are they doing? So they would want to get into it.
How do they get into the yellow and red and how do they get into each room?
They asked each teacher by around Wednesday of the week before the next one starts. We, we put, we in, put into a spreadsheet any work they had missing. And so if they had work missing in my class in, in English, then that lowers it. It might be yellow, then it would be red. Discipline, any kind of discipline issues. And then if they have everything, they've got all the, even if they're not a student, if they've got everything turned in and they're doing everything they can do, then I've seen those in my group too.
Thank you so much. We appreciate what you've given.
Thank you guys.
This time we move on to the approval of the minutes from February tenth, twenty twenty meeting. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve the minutes from the February tenth, twenty twenty meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Uh, President, I'm staying since I was not part of that meeting.
Kenny, Jennifer? Yes. Kenny, Suzie? Yes. It's time to move on to the encum- uh, approval of the encumbrances.
Looking over the first page of that document, um, a lot of the big ticket items. Three fifty-one, you see on there, we had a new firewall installed across the district that was done this past Wednesday. It's up in place and everything's running well. That's a mandatory thing that we have to have. Keeps us protected, uh, whether it's from hijackers or being able to get on specific sites. So fortunate to get that in place. Anything else on there? Three fifty-three was grade school. A lot of those. Three fifty-four, all the way down. All those in the middle right there were paid for out of our, also that literacy grant.
What are the red jackets?
F C C L A. That's part of their deal. They wear the red jackets when they go to state competitions.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay. Yeah.
Reveal bugs. Three sixty-six was middle school. Added football jerseys. We got, um, basketball jerseys will probably come in in the next month. Football jerseys, that'll get us the next four or five years down the road with jerseys and both of those. Three seventy-two is for a bus, um, had a radiator that we rented and installed. Grade school books and the two hotels for summer conference stuff. Um, second page, um, that's the, um, grade school full time. We added one to, added an A to our kindergarten center. That's encumbering that money. And then those other three on there are national board certifications status.
No, David, there's probably says it's empty on.
Um, that's the one that we have to get through. Ram Jack, that we have to get the inspection.
Was that?
That's the one Robert Zachary recommended that Ram Jack and them have worked with to clear all their inspections.
I just didn't recognize it, man.
Yes. Um, he was one that we were put in touch with because he has worked with Ram Jack and does the inspections that they need done. Going to Willy find. First page of these, there's the twelve that says services, but that's also an additional A C unit. That was the one for the cafeteria. We had to go out at the middle school. That, the one in the cafeteria actually went out two months ago and they've been getting by on space heaters. So we're able to replace that. Of course, in the foundation repair, David Wild is the plumber that you just mentioned. The lawnmower we'll talk about later got a pretty good deal on that. So we're able to get that from Stigro Bell. And the supplies, we don't anticipate spending that full two thousand, but we did get baseball and softball. Their own weed eater and blower so they can handle, take care of anything they need with their fields.
So are these the actual amounts that are spent or just allocated?
Just in cover, like that one, like the two thousand keeps us safe. We know we're not going to go over that. That gives us the ability to spend that to that. I don't anticipate with two blowers, two weed eaters, and two gas cans and two, that we would get there, but, um, yes.
Okay, okay. Okay. A second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve the encumbrances as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Jennifer? Yes. This time we move on to a financial reports.
Uh, first page, Dan, you'll see your typical gasoline stuff from people going to athletic events or drivers' head or even a couple of academic, uh, events, speech conferences, F C C L A. Nothing out there, you know, any of that stuff. They roll the dills. I mean, again, same story, um, different month, you know, comparing month to month and comparing all the time because some months things roll in, but we definitely look a little bit better financially last year to this year, February. Cash forward that you see on the bottom of page two, all the way at the bottom, two point six, we're still on pace at the end of the year to close the books at about one point nine. The thing, what I'll talk about a little bit, my superintendent's report, I want us to be cognizant of that, make a decision as a board is what's that comfortable number carryover wise that we want to be? Typically, we've been in that fourteen to sixteen percent range, um, which is maximum carryover that we can have. That's fourteen to sixteen is dependent on a couple of different things. But, um, typically we've spent down in June, so we weren't peeing a lot. With the legislature this year, the last two years really given more money than they have to schools in a long time. The question's going to be, what are you guys doing with that money? If we're sitting on a bunch of that money, we've got to have a plan. Currently in Oklahoma, um, there's nine hundred something dollars that public schools have set aside and carry over. So the question is going to be, is that, um, is that wise use of that funds? Do you guys need to be spending everything right away that we give you, or how much do you need to be saving? Again, we've typically been in that fifteen percent range. That's about three months for us of payroll. So no decisions need to be made yet. Again, we're going to be healthy at the end of the year. It'll be around one point nine depending on if we decide to do anything else. So overall financials are, it's, I was talking to Brett today, kind of both sides of your mouth. I mean, they're healthy in the fact that we're going to carry over what we could, but they're not healthy enough to do some other of these projects that we would like to do. So we are still asking the state to increase funding for schools. And as it sits, um, we're still playing along one point nine and our bank accounts are still.
Anyone good with that? All those? This time we move on to public comment. The Board of Education likes public comment at this point in the regular meeting. A, comments concerning agenda items. No one present for that. B, other comments in accordance with policy B E B dash R. No one present for that. Information items, superintendent's reports.
Uh, we'll direct you to the screen. Facilities update. I've talked about the plumber and the inspection we need to get for that. That is on pace. Uh, we anticipated them being here for spring break. They've got some things booked up. They're coming right after spring break. We've met with, um, high school and our coaches about closing off that front parking lot. Uh, they anticipate three days, could be eight days maximum, but it won't interfere, might interfere with a little bit of traffic flow in front of the gym in that parking lot. But other than that, shouldn't, shouldn't really interfere anything, even with practice or anything in the gym because they're not going to be in that area. They're going to be in that front, uh, area. Some positives on roof. I know we've been talking about roofs all year like it's been a bad deal. It has been a bad deal. Um, currently we've put a test in place at the high school. No leaks all day.
All day, no leaks.
First time we've said that in a long time. So hats off to Pico and his crew.
Fourteen trash cans are gone.
Just a test. We've, we've got some more stuff coming in and, uh, we're, we're, uh, it's, this actually, if you haven't seen, I'll pass that around if you guys want to see. Like the metal and then a primer, and then anywhere there's a screw or a bolt, they'll come treat that. And anywhere there's a seam, they'll come put, and then it's a spray on, think of like a bed liner coating. Well, we thought, hey, we can do that ourselves. Um, so that's, we ordered some stuff, got it in here and did a test application on that part of the library. And we had our first test last night, this morning, rained until three o'clock till we got here today, and no leaks in the high school. Mrs. Kopen is confirming that. So, um, the plan is for us to order additional supplies in that area and continue those major affected areas. The rest of the high school, at the middle school over in Miss Lewis's area, and then everything at the grade school, the library, the first grade center. So that's moving forward. That's going to be a substantial savings for us, so we're excited about that. Uh, finished all the hot water in the first grade. I believe we're all the way done with the first grade.
We're done.
One, um, one more coming in. Talked about the new mower and the weed eaters that we've got. Um, started spraying our grounds. We think that's going to be a big deal for us mowing wise this year. We spent a ton of time last year mowing. And the theory is we spent a bunch of time mowing weeds. Well, if we can get all those out of there, it won't take us as much time, manpower to mow the Bermuda. So, um, we're going to finish doing that hopefully this week. Cafeterias, again, speaking on our maintenance staff, we've had some, some, some tables that were, some chairs. It's one piece table chair set break off. A lot of places would have to buy new one. We were able to weld those back on there and get those put up. Uh, baseball field for the most part, I think is complete. The firewall transition, we talked about that, has been just a little bit. So, um, facilities, those guys have been going hot and heavy just like on here. Excited about what we're getting with the roofs. Uh, legislative stuff, not a ton. The screen's full of different things, but really not a ton of stuff that I want to alert anybody on. A couple of bills that, um, that are new to me in the last couple of weeks is Senate Bill one, 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 five, which allows emergency certifications to go get, go past that current year window. They sent a survey out to superintendents in schools across the state. And for most part, all the men said back that we would be in a bind or we would have to hire somebody else emergency or somebody else long term if you didn't extend, extend that. So that might be something that gets some legs. Uh, and then House Bill thirty-four, forty-six, um, there's a couple of things in there. Talks about RSA and saving some state dedicated money and putting it towards that. Um, the state superintendent is convinced that, that we used reading coaches across the state. It was very beneficial for kids. Um, I don't have any evidence of that, nor do anybody that I've talked to, so I don't. This one looks like it's getting legs because you'll hear it speak about, I think it's Mississippi. They implemented some reading coaches here a while back and their scores, uh, really jumped. So that's been a talking point. Um, I'm not sure I'm on that same. I would rather have that mon- money spent locally than spend at the state department, hire a bunch of reading coaches to go out. I would rather us hire our own people with lower class sizes and bring back classes. But that's, and that's where A and B, I talked about a while ago, carryover, there's, there's talk coming out of there. We just got to have peace of mind of what we want our carryover to be and why is that? Because legislation, oil and gas, I mean, prices are down, revenue's going to be decreased. So everybody's got to justify capital where money's going to. If we've put so much more money into public debt the last two years, are you guys being good stewards of that? So just making sure we have, uh, if we're going to continue to ask for more funds, what are those funds going to go to? Next deadline is March twelfth. A lot of deadlines coming up to the next month about bills being heard of, houses of origin, what can continue. Um, so really those are the only two things I wanted to just put on your radar, um, because we don't know where, where things are headed right now. And then some important dates at the bottom, um, coming up. Student achievement update. We've continued our professional development track with the instructional leadership framework. Our first session, they came back and created their guiding coalitions and psych visions. Steps three, four, boulder, what we took place last month with developing, implementing, and modern, monitoring those standards aligned curriculum assessments. Uh, and then really just getting at the root of, we've, we've collected data, but the thing they talked about the other day, and I've not really heard it put this way, is looking at the effect data and not the cause data. What are we doing as adult practitioners to make sure that we do something different with that data? What can we do different to get different results? Uh, we talked about the day to day. At least we're all from the state department. They ended up coming on March fourth. I did not get to attend. It was the same day. Mr. Kettles, Dr. Kettles and myself had our tribal consultation in Durant. Our principals reported. It was a good day of learning, uh, whether it was how to use the new dashboard that came out or just some simple things we can do internally with some procedures to make sure we're putting our best for affordable kids. Tribal consultation went very well in Durant. Got a, got a great partnership that continues with them. We've always attended the teacher professional development day. They made us aware that there's also an admin, um, professional development for principals. We're going to look to go with that as well. Conscious disciplines workshop that they're doing on all their headstarts April. We're taking a small bus of faculty down there. They're paying for all of that. Um, H S S S, S H S is high school student services. What the Choctaw's offer, it might be reimbursements for students taking drivers in or paying for their cap and gown or if they want to pay for an A C T score. They also have a future teacher program, and this is for any American Indian, Native American student. If you are looking to go to school to be a teacher, that they will supplement and pay tuition. They're on board with, uh, helping with the teacher shortage. So, um, just bringing that information back, we also brought Eric Staff from the high school, knowing how much stuff was at the high school. So somebody that's in there implementing it, so Eric's bringing that stuff back. They need my staff and students to make sure that we're taking advantage of all those resources that the Choctaws provide. Free kindergarten, our enrollment for P K K went well. Appreciate all those staff who came up here from nine to seven P M. We had a good handful come after five o'clock on that day. One enrollment, we had thirty-six pre-K students come and forty-six kindergarten students. Would love to see those numbers around the sixty plus range. And then also new for this year is we've got new Title One schoolwide plans. We just met with principals this morning. Those will be in place for next year, so we just started talking about that five, five step process. It really aligns perfectly with what we've been doing with our psych guiding coalitions and meeting about the data and putting those plans in place. So that's just some of the behind the scenes work we're doing or have started. This is something just to talk about, wanting to get board's perspective. There's a lot of things going on with that right now. Taking precautions. The big, working with the Centers for Disease Control Prevention, Oklahoma State Department of Health have put out recommendations. Most everything is just like the flu. Wash your hands, take care of yourself. Those that mostly been effective, um, have been those infants or elderly or those with immune deficiencies. The, the big scary part of it they've talked about is if, if flu is the, 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 or death toll is the proper way to say it, but the fatality rate is like zero point one percent for the flu. Well, they anticipate what it looks like for coronavirus is one to three percent. It doesn't seem big, uh, but if the flu is that small. So came out today, um, Princeton, New Jersey has six cases of the coronavirus. Princeton is shut down after spring break. Everybody's going virtual. OU just emailed some faculty and staff about two hours ago and said they'll know within forty-eight hours. They might consider going virtual after spring break as well. So we just met this morning as a leadership staff and talked about making sure what, um, what we're doing, who we're communicating with. If you have a plan in place, taking a lot of guidance from those two organizations as well as our state department. This is a letter that our state department has said, hey, if you guys want to put out. We haven't done anything as put out what, what, what I want to lean on you guys as a board. You don't want to, you know, fear longer and make people worry, but you also want to make sure they're, they're prepared. So that would be something I would lean on you guys on. You know, is this something we just need to put on our website? Is this something need, you know? How much do we need to be out there communicating about anything with the coronavirus? We don't have any, any cases or anything right now that we're directly worried about. Um, I just don't know if you guys have been hearing anything or if your thoughts are that we need to get out before something happens. Right now we're just prepared, uh, and relieved with that.
Must be every time they're prepared.
Yep, yep.
And be ready to educate.
Yes, yes. So, um, we've talked again as a leadership group, we've sent some stuff home at the elementary level just in terms of hand washing and just like we do with flu. The hope is with the weather warming up, some of this stuff dies out and the summer gives it the time, those people who are smarter what they do, uh, to find a cure for that before it comes back to the fall. So kind of hang tight for now is what we're doing. Um, upcoming things that we're working on, just got contacted by a group that, uh, we wrote a grant with in Clinton. Russ is rural utility services. It's a connectivity deal. You've got to have a partner with other schools. You can write a grant for up to a million dollars. Um, what's your part? There has to be a fifteen percent matching from the districts. Well, the great thing about how we wrote the grant in Clinton, we spend about that much every year on techni-. It's a technology focused grant. We already spend that much money. It's a great opportunity in terms of, hey, if we encumber money for Chromebooks next year and Smart boards, that can count as our fifteen percent. So we're not having to come out with anything outside, um, of the norm of what we would do. So we're looking for partners in that, other partner school districts that will be willing to participate in that with us. The deadline's April tenth, so it's something that we have to put, uh, put the speed on. But, um, you won't get notified till next fall. The monies won't come in till the spring type of deal. But a huge deal, if we're looking to improve technology right here, that we currently check all the boxes, you know, grant wise. You got to meet a lot of criteria. We meet all the criteria. The goal is to find two or three other partner schools that meet like criteria. We combine, we write this grant, and hopefully split a million dollars in technology. So the R F P, request for proposal was cleaning, was completed. We got notification of that, um, today. And so, uh, we're waiting on vendors to come, uh, give us some suggestions on how they can work with us. Want to invite each of you guys on the board, if you're available, Tuesday or Thursday. We've got two different groups coming into each of our three cafeterias, um, that want to work with us. They're going to give us some sample food op- meal options. What they're going to do, they're going to feed all of our staff at each of those sites. Let those, we get a meal, a parent teacher conference, not when our staff, um, are, are here and captive. But also give us a chance to kind of vet those two organizations, what they do. Both, they'll both have leadership here at both of those places for us to be able to Q and A and ask them any kind of questions we want on how they might be able to help improve our child nutrition program.
Tomorrow?
Correct, correct. Yes, tomorrow and Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday. We also have parent teacher conferences going on until three thirty, seven thirty. But they'll be here from three thirty to five in the cafeteria. We'd love you guys to come by and sample what they have, but also to ask any questions on what they might do for us.
Understand your preferences.
We have to put it up to bid for three. I really only believe there might be two that might give us a bid. Southwest is the third kind of player in it. The other ones that I know of, they typically work with large schools or universities. Sedexo is one, I think, or the other one. But the Keystone is the one that's coming on Tuesday night in O P, O P A A. I forget what it stands for. It's coming on Thursday night. But both of those groups, um, work with several different schools across Oklahoma and have both got good recommendations from the people I've talked to. The third option, or actually there'll be fourth option, four options for us. The third option could be, uh, bringing in our own director type of person, or the fourth option would be doing nothing different. So want to see options, want to see what, uh, what's available for us.
It doesn't jeopardize any jobs?
Correct.
For our, our folks?
Nothing would change for our personnel. Retirement stays intact. Everything stays intact. It would just be consulting services coming in and helping, whether it's inventory or bill. And they'll do, these companies both can do it whatever. They, they come and work with schools and they totally take it over. Um, or they could do some piece of that stuff that I've talked about. We don't want to change anything staffing wise. So if you propose for us, our staff's going to stay intact. Let us know that what else you want to do for us. Advantage magazine, that will be released on March twenty-sixth. Advantage magazine is put out in Haskell County. Talks about everything in the area. You'll see on the bottom left, that was our, um, advertisement, I guess you would say, that was part of the Advantage, Advantage magazine last year. Every school in the county gets a free half page, and that's what they put together. On the right is what's going to be in there for state and public schools, um, this year. We bought the extra half page. We felt that marketing, uh, for two hundred and fifty dollars was going to be a great sales pitch. When somebody opened that magazine and looked about Haskell County, what was going on school wise. If the other different schools just have their name and a couple of pictures in there, and we have that story to tell about what we offer. We thought that was going to be much better for us. So look for that to come out on the twenty-sixth. Um, F F A convention, we, uh, is on April twenty-ninth. We have five students walking across the state, so pretty proud about that. You know, several others that I know Mr. Dawson wanted to recognize that, um, put a bunch of time and effort into, to get the work done. That, that weren't a part of that five, but also put a bunch of work in. F F A plate sale, it's April fifteenth and sixteenth. Don't have it on there, but B A N found out. We just awarded, they, uh, we, we made state, we'll be at state in Ada. We put in a, uh, we've submitted a date for us to go. We have to find out for sure what that date is. When I find out what date, we, we will be at state in Ada, we'll let you guys know that the B A N did let states accept that. Um, next board meeting, Tuesday. Know that we're out of school that Monday for Easter. That's why the board meeting will be on Tuesday, April fourteenth at seven. Uh, and then just put a little plug at the bottom, you know, and change the slide, add a little plug for the census. And I think, um, we've done a good job in this area of educating people of how important the census is, whether it's for our state department event, our state, our Choctaw Nation, or Haskell County, uh, those are all dollars. And we know from the school side how much is tied to per student counts. A lot of things across the state or even just in our local county are tied to head counts. So if those heads aren't counted, we're not going to be eligible for those funds. So spread the word as much as you can. It's very important for us as a state, for us as a region, and us as a county to get everybody captured. So, and that ends.
Okay. It's time to move on to action topics. Action topic A, consideration of contracting with an auditor for the twenty twenty-one school year and to audit the financial activities of the nineteen twenty school year.
Would recommend for you to do that. That's the same auditors we've had, Patton, um, they've done a good job for us. So just going to simply ask for you guys to approve.
Make one for continuing using to bet and auditing twenty-four months.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to, um, enter to contract carrying Patton of with, uh, for the, uh, twenty twenty-one school year to audit the financial activities of the nineteen twenty school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And C T S. Action topic B, consideration of renewing our contract with Mass for student personnel. Action topic B, consideration of renewing our contract with MaaS for student personnel software for attendance and grades for the twenty twenty one school year.
MaaS is what we use behind the scenes for everything student information-wise. It's what we've been using for a while. Everyone in offices are completely comfortable with it, but not regularly going in a different direction at that time. So I also recommend that we accept that.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to stay with MaaS for our student personnel software for attendance and grades for the twenty twenty one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Yeah, I did have one quick question. Will the money for both of those, the auditor and MaaS, will that be encumbered next year, I guess? Is that how that works? Like, where?
It's part of next year's budget, yes.
Okay, the money will be allocated next year?
Next year will be spent next year.
Action topic C, consideration of approval to surplus the following, two thousand four twin star and a two thousand five board bass.
If you guys want to see any of those, they're sitting back behind the maintenance farm right now. Both of them were retired repairing and fixing and tired to dump of money too. And it's passed that point, people's make recommend that we surplus those and move them on. If maybe somebody can scrap them or use them for a hunting vehicle or something.
People can't work his magic anymore on these.
Well, he's got a bunch of other magic that we want to spend in other places, so. Recommend both of those get surplused and get them out, right? Get them out. People's throwing them out, so.
He's done. He's done with them.
He's done, I'm done. Because I'm not getting out of here.
Make motion for surplus losses?
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to surplus the two thousand four twin star and two thousand five board bass. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic D, discussion to vote to adopt amended policy BED dash R and accompanying form BED dash R one regarding public participation.
Yes, this is a consideration to amend our current BED policy to focus more on agenda items only and to state that this time is for comments only from the pub. It would, we would accompany it by adopting a BED dash R one, which would be available from the clerk. And anyone wishing to talk to us during our meetings would have to report to her at least fifteen minutes before the meeting that night. Fill out the form, which I have the form right here. That states what item they want to talk about. And then they sign it that they have read and understand the BED form that's turned in, and then they will be able to discuss, not discuss, but comment on the agenda item. I think it's a, I think it's an excellent way to keep the subjects on what we're talking about at the meeting. And...
Stick to the agenda.
Stick to the agenda. A lot of schools are going to not even have a public comment. But I believe that we should have public comment because it allows the public to come in and talk to us about what we're actually doing that night. And again, it's comment only.
Why did you say it's fifteen minutes before the meeting?
Fifteen minutes before the meeting, yes. That way they see that clerk, yes. Apologies for that.
So they don't have to come in any time prior, just fifteen minutes before the meeting, they can show up to ask questions?
Well, they have to come in fifteen minutes before to fill that in.
And just fill this out.
Yeah, it has to be signed by, it has to be signed by the president and the board clerk.
But it's not to ask questions, you know, or to comment?
Where is it? It just says, signed by the board clerk, but it says, president of the school?
It's on page two. No, it's not signed by the president.
It's by the board clerk. Speaker, I'm sorry. Speaker and the board clerk.
And the date and time receipt. So they would have to get it from you and these fifteen minutes before the meeting starts. Or whoever the board clerk would be at that time.
Do you want to see?
I've got it right here. It's on the second page, second page.
Different?
You know, with any concern about if he's coming in that close to the actual start time of the meeting? Yeah.
Different.
Well, they post the agenda on Friday, so they have to do it at least fifteen minutes before. So they could do it earlier if they have the form, Kenny would have the form. Or the form could be here, but they have to present it to Kenny fifteen minutes before.
Is there, I guess, is there reason for changing the policy that we have now?
Personally, I think we need to focus more on what we're doing in the meeting itself and not some other subject out there.
Do they, does it say how many minutes they get to speak?
They get two minutes each for comment, a group or whoever, a total of fifteen minutes for all.
So if there's two, they get seven and a half minutes each?
No, just two minutes.
Just two minutes each?
It's all, it's all, they can get, they'll get a copy of this. And it says, and when they sign it, it says that they have read it and that they will abide by the rules to talk.
So you can have, you can have seven people speaking in one meeting?
Probably fifteen minutes? What about, what about how our agenda's had to be, a list of, or posted for me hours in advance? Would that be considered part of it? It'd be a special rule. A special rule? Yeah. And there's not any comment, it's just a special rule.
This is part of the regular meeting and it has to be posted before eight hours, right?
Yes.
So that's, this is...
Twenty-four hours.
Okay, but this is just fifteen minutes, is that... I know what, right now, people have to fill out a form up there to come in and...
They just fill out piece paper.
There's not a standard I've seen.
No, because they just fill out anything.
They just fill out piece papers, saying who they are, kind of having idea what they're talking about.
It's just kind of...
But they, that was, they turned that into Wednesday before the board meeting, and they had no idea what's going to be on the agenda until the agenda's approved on Thursday and posted on Friday. So once it's posted on Friday, they could get the form and they could address, they're being allowed to address the board and whatever.
Have you guys gone over this with the, with our policy people?
No, we change, we change policies all the time. We adopt new policies all the time and, you know, there's never any problem with that, so.
No. You were saying most schools don't, don't allow it or not? Well, I don't know so much about most schools, but me and Susie attended a board meeting training last Tuesday. I had a lawyer at that stated that schools are going away from public comment. They are not having it at all. You can get on line, we exert school after school after school in Oklahoma, and they will not public comment. And when they do, they limit it pretty strict. To the agenda? Yes. And so you're, we are in every right to not have it at all if we can choose to. But like I said, I feel that the public should be able to talk to us if it's about agenda item. Personally. Here. Motion?
Mm-hmm, please.
Motion to approve BED dash R policy as opposed to bed dash R one.
Okay, awesome. Okay. Motion made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer, to amend the policy BED dash R and the company form BED dash R one regarding public comment and participation. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
No.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Okay. This time we move on to the executive session. The House Executive Session to discuss and act upon the following business pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma statutes,规定 seven B, one of the opening act. Number one, discussion of retirement of Kathy Jones, grade school teacher, effective end of nineteen twenty school year. Number two, discussion of administrator contracts for the twenty twenty one school year. Motion please, the motion to be bed dash R to executive session.
Second.
Brett? Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett at seven forty-one PM to convene an executive session. Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Kenny, seconded by Jennifer at eight seventeen PM to turn the board to open session. The board convened into executive session at, what time are we going to executive session? Seven forty-one, yeah. Seven forty-one PM, present during executive session were Logan, Brad, Brett, and Kenny Whitson, Jennifer Turner, and Susan White. Superintendent Bochamp was also present. The votes were taken. The board returned to open session at eight seventeen PM.
Make motion to accept resignation, Kathy Jones.
Second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the resignation of Kathy Jones, grade school teacher. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Any new business?
Do we need to say no action?
Nope, no, no action. No bus, no business, so, turn?
Make motion for adjournment?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David at eight eighteen PM to turn.